Okay, good morning, everyone. Those of you that are here and those that may be watching the live stream or the recording at a later date. This is a study session, pretty much a presentation to the commissioners and discussion amongst ourselves. Generally, they're a little more quiet setting just around the table, but since water is one of the more important topics we deal with and issues in the county, we wanted to make sure that everybody's got the opportunity to kind of, at least hear the same information we're getting and again, just kind of not have everybody gathered around the table where you're just kind of watching us from afar. With that, I'd like to have our guests from the USGS kind of introduce yourselves and kind of just, I mean, I know you, you're going to talk through kind of the history of the study, so we'll just kind of go from there. Thanks.
All right. Hey, hello, everyone. My name's Corey Russell. I'm a hydrologist with the USGS out of the Colorado Water Science Center. Alongside me is my coworker Kelly. Over there, we're the two people that you may see out in the area collecting field data, and I also brought alongside me my supervisor, Rob Flynn. Today, I just wanted to give a general update of an ongoing study. This study has been going on since 2015, but it was recently renewed in 2020 for this 2021 to 2024 analysis. So I'm sure many of you are familiar, and some of you are actually landowners that are participating, so I just want to give an enthusiastic thank you to everybody that cooperates. Sometimes it's very difficult to get cooperation out of residents for these types of studies, but Elbert County has been overwhelmingly very welcoming and great to work with our data. And also the Albert Board of Commissioners, they've been great and enthusiastic about continuing this project, which has been extremely helpful for us in the center. So today's outline is, this is kind of just, like I said, a general update. The report isn't due until 2024. We do have a previous report that was published in 2019, and I have this link here, and I am glad to share it with anybody as well. We can get that out so that people can look at that online, and if you're interested in a physical copy, please just come up to me afterwards and we'll work something out. I'm usually in the area, so I could just drop it off at your home for you. But today, first, we're just gonna, I'm gonna give a basic overview of the Denver Bedrock Aquifers, just for anyone that's unaware or just is kind of maybe newer to the area and isn't, hasn't, isn't as quite as informed as they want to be. So it's just going to be a very general overview. I'm going to go over our measurement methods, kind of what we do, how we collect our data, and then I'm going to go over our well selection as well as some new wells. So with this project, it's constantly evolving. There's, we're trying to add in some new wells constantly because new data is always extremely helpful for us. Those new data points are really helpful at getting a full assessment, a full picture of the entire county. And I'm going to give a general summary and just the analysis methods that we're planning on using that were used in the previous study. And then also, for me, the most important part of this meeting is the open discussion that we can have with the board as well as the citizens, because that feedback is super helpful for us. You know, we sometimes even get people that are willing to join the study, which is great for us, because like I said, we love to gather new data and having anybody that's enthusiastic to join the project is great. So that's just kind of a general outline for this presentation. I don't want anticipating it being terribly long presentation. Like I said, I'm really interested in the open discussion that we should have at the So for anyone that's unaware of the area, this is just a general map of the bedrock aquifers within Elbert County and the Denver Basin. So as you can see up there, we have Elbert County outlined in red, and you can see that we have the five bedrock aquifers. We have the Upper Dawson, Lower Dawson, Denver, Arapahoe, and Laramie-Fox Hills. I'm sure a lot of y'all are very familiar with these. And as you can see, the extents taper off as you go eastward, and the Denver Basin is really interesting. It has this bowl shape to it, which is very apparent, and the cross-sections up top. So looking at this map, we can see that the Upper Dawson is what we call an unconfined aquifer. Unconfined means that there's not this overlying unit, and the Upper Dawson's a really good, just a really good example of that, because you can see up here on this map and on the cross-section, just where it's actually open to the land surface. And that's really helpful, because that's where aquifers get recharged. Anytime it rains, that water percolates down through the soil and it travels through that aquifer. But like I said, these aquifers do taper off as you go eastward, so there are other instances where these other bedrock aquifers are actually exposed and they're unconfined in certain parts of the county. And there's always really good discussions about unconfined versus confined aquifers. This diagram on the bottom right is a really great diagram, in my opinion, just showing the difference on how wells access confined versus unconfined aquifers. And so for confined aquifers, typically that recharge is in an area further away, and then it slowly works its way towards where that person may be getting their well water from. So for just a general idea of what's going on in Elbert County, these cross-sections are really great to see, and like I said, confined versus unconfined. Unconfined aquifers, I'm sure most people are aware and acquainted with the Upper Dawson and Lower Dawson, and for the most part, those are going to be unconfined within the So for us, we, as I'm sure, like I said, some of you landowners probably see us and talk to us as we're out there. What we do is we go out and we collect what we call a discrete depth to water, and that's just a depth to water within an instant point in time. And we do that using these e-calibration tapes that I have illustrated over here, and like you can see, we sometimes get some friendly live stock to join us. And so what we're doing is we just open these wells. Sometimes they have access ports, which are great as well. We just unscrew it and we put our tapes down, and we grab that instant point of data. And so for example, it could be, we could lower our tape down and we'll get a water level of 300 feet below land surface. And then what we do is we just input that into our computer program, and we log those in, and then we later on upload that to the web. So it's widely accessible to everybody. It's free. It's public information. And in addition to these discrete water levels, we have what we call continuous water level recorders, which some of you may be familiar with. They're these really tiny sensors, honestly, like about the size of this, not too much larger, and we connect those to some wires that we have. They're called vented cables, and what the continuous water levels are really good for is oftentimes when we measure these, they can be affected by pumping and whatnot, but the continuous water level recorders are great, because when we eventually do do the statistical analysis, it gives us a continuous period, so it's a lot easier for the statistical analysis to actually be extremely useful in telling whether or not water level within that area of the aquifers, you know, rising, lowering, or whatnot. So recently, with this continuation of the project, we did get more funds to install more continuous monitors, which are great. So that's what we've been working on alongside maintaining the current network. So like I was talking about, the ground elevation as well is calculated from that depth to water. So typically, when we're measuring it, we'll go out to a well, and the well can be a foot and a half off the ground, and we have what we call a measuring point, and that's just a consistent place that we measure. So from that point, it could be 320 feet below land surface. And then what we do is we just calculate it. We subtract that well casing height from that, as well as each tape, each water tape has what we call a correction coefficient. So say between 100 and 150 feet of that tape, you need to apply a certain correction to it, and that's just even more accuracy. So that all gets factored in when we calculate these depth to waters. So typically, if a landowner is curious, like sometimes we hand out that information right when we get to the well. Typically, what we'll do is we'll get that initial measurement and then run those calculations really quick, and that's what we give to them, because the water level depth below land surface is what we're looking for. We're not trying to add in like that extra foot or two, because it's just not as accurate. So currently, this is our current well selection. As you can see, we have 40 wells. We have a lot of wells actually sprawled across the county, and we have them in each bedrock aquifer, which is really good. You can probably see that most of our wells are along the western edge of the county, and there's a couple of reasons for that. One of the main reasons is development. What we are really concerned about, and it seems as though most of the citizens are concerned about, is how that development affects these water level trends. And so for us, it's really important for us to gather as much data as possible over in this western edge. And over in the eastern edge, we also have most of the deeper bedrock, what we would call the deeper bedrock aquifers. So if you look at these extents, you can see how they taper off. So when we go more eastward, it's easier for us to access the Laramie-Fox Hills or the Arapahoe Aquifer, because they outcrop in these areas. That's where they're kind of at the land surface, so we don't have to go necessarily 1,000 feet below land surface. So those are typically more oriented towards the eastern portion of the county. And as I'm sure some people are aware as well, there's just less development, so there's not as many wells out of the eastern portion for us to access and get data from. But more recently, with this continuation of the project, we have gotten permission and have additional wells as well. We have four new additional ones, and we plan on just keeping, keep adding on to this network, because additional data points are great to have. And so these new wells are actually all going to be outfitted with the continuous transducers, which are really great for this western edge. Like I said, the continuous recorders are really good for areas where there is more pumping, because it just gives us some, some more data to work with when we're doing these statistical analyses. And for anyone curious, most of our wells are in the Upper and Lower Dawson. Like I said, ease of access, and what we've just noticed is that is where most people's wells are actually located. Those are the main aquifers. So yeah, that's just a quick overview. And so with the new well selections, this is really interesting. So as we get more data, when you get more data, I mean, as scientists, usually we're like, okay, that's really cool. So what is this telling us? Okay, is it telling us this or that? Could we find a new well in this area that will help reinforce this hypothesis we have of what's going on in the area? So for us, we actually have some areas where we are most interested in finding and prioritizing new well selections. And like I've said, those still are along the western edge of the aquifer, but, but we do have some areas where we're looking into some more Arapahoe wells as well, and like that middle, kind of the centralized section of Elbert County. And so with this project just, you know, ongoing, we're going to just keep implementing these new wells, because typically with, the great thing about these discrete water levels is we can be in and out of a well within five to 15 minutes, which is really great for us. That means we can just hit more wells in a single day. And if we can hit more wells in a single day, that means we can add more to our network, and we can just have even more data points, which is always really helpful, especially with these statistical analyses. And this is just, for those continuous monitors, that picture at the top right is kind of what it looks like if you're looking at it from above. We install these O-rings that keep all of our equipment in place and don't, you know, have any impacts on the well or the pump itself. And we have something we call a desiccant, which is that clear equipment at the top, and that just helps maintain the equipment along with the vented cable. So, so far, we, we have this measurement general summary, and you know, I'm sure most people are aware of this, but the month of the highest ground elevation is typically going to be late winter to early spring, and that has to do with, you know, irrigation and agricultural demands, and also just precipitation. And then we also see that our month of lowest ground elevation elevations, in conjunction with this, is going to be the summer and fall, because that's typically when people are going to be using their water systems. And just to help illustrate this idea, we have these two graphs up here that are, if you're wanting to look at, you know, any of the publicly online data, these are the graphs that you can see, and they're really helpful to just look at, kind of see how these trends are occurring. And this trend on the UDAU 19, I like this one really well. I like it because it's, the trend isn't as apparent as if you were to look at the Laramie 6 over on this right side, where you can kind of see that the water level is trending downwards, whereas the, you know, the Upper Dawson 19, just the alias that we have for that well, is, it's just not as apparent. So this is a really good illustration of how water levels in different aquifers in different locations differ. So this just further reinforces, you know, our point of implementing new data being really helpful and just having this, this study just continuing and ongoing. As we install these new wells, you know, in a few years down the road, we'll have even more data, and that's really great with these trends that I'm going to talk about in a second. So previously, here's our equation at the top right, and they, they did a 2015 to 2018 trend analysis, and what they did is they did these regression, they use these regression equations, and what this allows us to do is to, you know, fully, we're using these mathematical and statistical equations to further reinforce and see if the, you know, the well is actually trending in a downward or upward or neutral direction. And we do this by using the P-value, which you may or may not be familiar with, and basically, we have this criteria. If the P-value is less than or equal to .10, then we're going to use that data. We're going to use that, that, that trend that is apparent. If it's not, then what that tells us is that there's actually not a statistical correlation, and we can actually use that to, you know, say whether or not the water levels are going down or not. And then we also have this R-squared value as well, and that's just one of our other benchmarks that need to be met. And sometimes within our wells, we'll have these, these two statistical analyses going on, and one might be an R-squared value higher than the previous one. What we would do is we would just use that higher R-squared value, because that shows that there's a stronger statistical correlation with the trend. And so for this previous study, they also did the relative difference and the water, what I'll call, they're called, we call them potentiometric surface maps. We just think of them as water table maps, and that just shows us, you know, what the water table is at in a certain area, and I have an example on the next slide. But we plan on doing that as well, and at the end of the discussion, I would love to see and hear everyone's input on if you, the, if y'all find this helpful, if there's anything, if any, y'all have any ideas on anything else that y'all would like to see with this upcoming report, I would love to hear that as well. But we do this analysis both in a program that we use called R, as well as our mapping program, ArcGIS. And ArcGIS is just what we use to make our maps and do some statistical interpretation alongside our other program, R. So like I said, these are some of our previous analyses that were performed and that I anticipate us performing again. So with these previous analyses being performed, it's really great, because we already have this data, and so when we update this report, we'll have that to look back on and see, okay, well, water level area, or the water table in this area, you know, went down maybe a foot or so, and that was from 2015 to 2018. Well, what does it look like from 2015 to 2024, or 2023? And so, you know, with this project, it's just building up on the previous report. And that continuation is really helpful for landowners kind of seeing, you know, how this trend is, is it trending downward? Is it trending downward even quicker than before, than in our previous analysis? And what could that mean for development and whatnot? So I really enjoy this map in the middle. What it shows us is those downward triangles, or just the triangles in general, they show where there was a statistically significant trend, and based on the size of them, is whether that trend was going from 0.13 feet to 5.0 feet. Most of these trends, as you can see, are trending downwards. They have that upside-down triangle. There are a couple of wells where we do see a positive trend, and this could be attributed to recharge in the area. You can see that two of those are actually in the Upper Dawson, so like I said, that'd be an unconfined aquifer, so you know, recharge is readily available to those aquifers. And so to us, those are really interesting, so when we are doing this network updates, and like I said, we're going to be trying to constantly do that, when we're looking for new wells, those areas where it's almost, it's an anomaly of it being positive rather than a negative trend, those are other areas we prioritize finding new wells. And so as this project just keeps ongoing, we'll see those new data points come in, and you know, for us, that's just an additional question, like, oh, that's interesting, why is this occurring in this area? Maybe we should just, we should try to find another well in the area and see if, you know, this new well, when we start collecting data from it, if it's also showing a statistically significant, like, positive trend. And then these other examples, the one at the top right is the, the potentiometric surface map, and, and also there's one at the bottom right as well. And we also, alongside that, have those maps that I was talking about where, you know, we're, we're looking at it, the water level trend, and how that is different in certain areas. And so those maps are really great visual aids for, I think, most people, landowners included. So for us currently, these are, these are just a couple of examples of what we plan on doing when we, when we publish this report at the end of 2024. So as of right now, this is kind of our, our project outline. So we're currently in fiscal year 2022, so we're just continuing our data collection, and this is one of our annual presentations to the county, just to get, kind of give y'all an update and know that, like, just to reassure y'all, we are still out here, we're, we're collecting this data, we are trying to, you know, update this network, we're trying to do the best science we can out in this area. As well as fiscal year 2023, which is, if you look at our calendar over here, that begins at the beginning of October 2022, so later this year, we're going to start doing those, looking at these statistical analyses again, and we're going to begin the reports and the backgrounds, and that's when everything will really start coming together. So next year, we'll, we'll have a much more exciting update for y'all, I think, and that's just kind of our plan going forward. And then, like I said, this, what we, we call them SIR, it's just, stands for Scientific Investigation Report. It's just the report that we're going to put out at the end of our fiscal year 2024, which, as you can see, that'll be, oh, no, it doesn't quite go there, but that'll be October 2024, which is our deadline for that. And so for, for this project, like I said, we've had great success with both the Board of County Commissioners, as long as the landowners, so hopefully, we can continue working on this project and just keep ongoing with it, and we even have some new ideas of maybe some additional work we could do, maybe some implementation of water quality, which is really interesting. We can test the water to see how old it is, which is, goes back to the idea of recharge that I was talking about earlier. We've done this before with other projects, and it's really cool. Sometimes you'll get water that's 30,000 years old, and then other times you'll get water that's two years old. And just having this data available is a really great guide to a further understanding of the aquifers in the area. So that's, that's our update for this project so far, and I'm really interested in any of the boards or the citizens, if y'all have any questions or if y'all have any concerns or just any input for the project, that's great for me to hear. Because like I said, we're still, this, this project is still ongoing, so you know, getting that, your opinions has really helped for us. We can implement that going forward, you know, we can include some different things that maybe we just hadn't touched on, and we could include that in the report and whatnot. So if anyone has any questions, yes?
Several things, you know, if I can remember them all. Seven years ago, when we wrote the, for the grant for this $376,000, our SW, which is Scope of Work, was to acquaint, was to find data across the board for Elbert County.
Yes.
And one of the SWs that we wanted was to make this information transparent to the public.
Yes.
Okay, let's go back to year number seven.
Yes.
Page seven?
Yeah.
Go down at the bottom.
There we go.
Okay, we're, we looked this up.
Yes.
And one of these wells is in Elbert.
Okay.
Which is out in the booties, so let's put it out there.
Uh-huh.
Another one is out by, I'm going to say close to the line.
Okay.
There's nothing in your presentation that even comes close to talking about what's happening in the high-density areas like Elizabeth or Tyler or whatever, about water levels.
Yes.
And that's where common sense tells you with a high development rates, now that's where we're going to see a lot of water fluctuation.
Yes, yes.
Now, why don't we see that in this presentation?
So, so if we refer to the next slide, I believe, oh, sorry, one more. This statistical trend analysis, so this has already been reported on previously, and this report is publicly available. And for this update, I really wanted to just touch on what we've been doing to continue this, continue this product, but we have done some statistical analyses, and these are all publicly available. And that data is there. There are, as you can see, there are trends throughout the area, and sometimes when we complete these, when we have completed a statistical analysis in the past, not every data or not every well is usable, and that is in regards to our measurements and whatnot. But for this, I, I was more so wanting to give an update on what we are doing to continue the project, and I didn't necessarily want to give what has already been reported on, because I had seen that that had, that was a presentation that had been given, and so that was just a misgiving within my end. But that data is available, and we do talk about it within our report. So that was just kind of my idea behind this presentation, was an update to reassure the citizens on what we were doing and how we are continuing these efforts. And, and to get input, like if you see any data gaps within these areas, we, we are aware of some areas where there just aren't as...
One of the things that you find, as you know, my community is doing the same thing that you're doing. We've done approximately 20 wells.
Okay.
And we're doing those around the town of Elizabeth.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Yes.
And most of the people, when you talk to them, they call you up and say, would you look at my well? They have no idea anything about wells.
Mm-hmm.
Now, give you an example. I did one the other day, and this is in the Upper Dawson. Now, Robert lives about four or five miles away from the town of Elizabeth.
Yes, sir.
So the further what you get away from population, the more stable the water levels are. In around our area, we're, we're into 60-foot drops, 40-foot drops. From an August to August, we dropped 64 feet. I checked one of the Wood Marches well the other day in the Upper Dawson. Okay? And his well, being in the Upper Dawson, his pump was at 220. We checked his water level at 197. That means he has 23 feet of water, which is equivalent to about 33 gallons of water. Now, the people need to know this. Now, what is, what can the USGS, by looking at your data, we're, we're in a crisis level around, especially the southern part of Elizabeth. And we're, we're looking at pumps that are going to have to be bored by August or September to have things given out, and that's going to cost somebody a lot of money. Okay? Out in the USGS or the town, or Elbert County, they put, put into words, out in the community, that people understand that water is something that isn't a gimme, it isn't guaranteed. As we know, the Denver Basin is going to be eventually pumped to extinction, because there is no real, what do you want to call it, recharge. And so you've got million-dollar homes that, you know, around the town of Elizabeth, that if they lose their, their money, their house is not worth anything. So this information needs to be... And so, you've got million dollar homes that, you know, around the town of Elizabeth, that if they lose their, their money, their house is not worth anything. So, this information needs to be, how do I wanna say it? It needs to be more concise around the areas of concentration of population and concern. But there's nothing in your presentation that would let anybody know around the town of Elizabeth that there is a, a major water drawdown. And it's, we're right now drawn down to the same level as we were in August of last year. So, what is it gonna look like in August of this year?
That's.
We need that information out there, or it's gonna be a lot of people pissed off.
Yeah, I I I fully agree with that. And one of the ideas we have floated within our center is to create what we call a landing page, which is a very concise webpage where, when you look at these reports, a lot of it's just jargon that's not easily understandable. That's just how we have to give our reports. We have guidelines that we have to follow. We have timelines that we have to follow. But what this landing page that we have floated could do is provide an easier way to understand what is going on within the area. And when we get to these statistical trends that, you know, like water levels going down and whatnot, we do have the data publicly available. And so, what we would really actually like to do, and like I said, we floated this, is to create that landing page. And this is where input from the citizens would be great. Would that be something that y'all would find useful or not? It would be probably a one pager with a map, some text. We are pretty confined in that we would have to, you know, get it approved. We have pretty thorough approval processes. But in regards to statistical analyses of like from 2021 to 2024, we are limited to when we can release that. We are, we have to release that with our SIR, which will be due in 2024. But what we could do with this landing page is provide a quick link or like an easier access to the well, like that data, if you go two slides back, Kelly. We could include a link to this, so people can look on it, and we could potentially include a map of the area. And, you know, what we could do too is include a link to the previous report and whatnot. Yes?
Let me kinda follow Bob's question. Yeah, I think it'd be wonderful if you have any kind of water or simplified way for citizens to start answering their own questions in a way that you scientists understand that we cannot. That would be wonderful.
Yeah, we, we talked about that.
I am a little, I was a little taken back by the fact that, you know, you said that the last report was in 2018. And that's four years ago. We've had a lot happening in the last four years, in a, in a variety of ways, not just the growth of development. But, you know, obviously, we've had some kind of issues, droughts and so on and so forth. And so, we're still waiting to go to 2023, 24. That's, that's a lot, that's a lot more time. We are operating in a vacuum, if you will, not us and our elected officials. So, I guess my question is this, it'd be great to have information that we can look at and understand. As an example, you know, I've been monitoring my well for the last forty two times, every time. And I have month over month and year over year of wells, left the original base on. The Upper Dawson where I'm at, it's kind of, there's what we used to call a spy. It's like the, the hollow field. It's down about seven feet, August to August of 2012. But when these citizens look at information, it's important. But we're not the ones making the decisions. Now, we're making the voting decisions, we're making the decisions in handy for what our elected officials are doing. But my concern is, my question, you know, my suggestion, if you will, I don't know. And maybe we'll pick up answers as well. Isn't it time that we take the seven and a half years of data that we have, such as what's happening in the Upper, we can't even handle all of that. Where the water sources are required to be used, from city development, city development. We need that information. You know, when you're building, and don't get me wrong, I'm pro, I'm pro group. And I was, and I, when I was in office, I stood up and supported, you know, I'm scared of my hair and the feathers out of my shorts. But I supported, you know, the, 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 the rights and the right to do what we're doing. But long and short of it, this is such an important ingredient in making decisions about our development and what are water sources, our resources, our, we need that pretty quick. And our elected officials need that pretty quick, so they can start after a year and a half to these decisions. That it's three or four years down the road, and you find out that we're in trouble. So, we're waiting.
Yeah, those are very great points that you bring up. So, what this gets into is our initial proposal, our proposal that was submitted, I believe, in 2020, and the agreements that we came upon then, which is we have the report out by the end of 2024. With those reports comes a very rigorous review process, taking at least nine months, sometimes longer. So, typically, what happens is we can do that analysis, and then we have, the issue is we have to go through that, that review process. So, it's, I I understand those concerns. It's, I, I, my hands are kind of tied when it comes to releasing these statistical trend analyses before the due date. I, that, I think, I I might have to defer to my supervisor, would require, you know, a rewriting of the entire proposal itself. Maybe we could float the idea of a earlier data release. But unfortunately, just with how the agreement has been set in place, my hands are kind of tied. Yeah.
You're a contractual component of all of this. It really is very stressful to make your decisions. Yeah, you're gonna have to have all the information that you need to make. That's probably a question for them, I'm not sure we can have some questions today. I don't want to.
That's a good point. If you ask a question for the citizens, and the others that are doing the studies, where, where does the coordination of us all make sure that all the information is available? Do we have a relationship to them, or do we have to see them? I'm not familiar with that.
I have seven years of data. And we, including, and also their data, showing what's going on. But we really, in my community, we shared that with my community. That community, the other data, about forty people, we gave them some ideas. The, the, the commissioners and the other administrators that are here in the middle. But we don't, we've got the data, and we have put, Robert's written several works and put it on the Elizabeth paper. Yeah, Elizabeth, and I'm sure that after this meeting today, there's gonna be some more documentation and all that on the website. Now, I personally don't have a website, other than, but I do have a, 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 which is really surprising. And about ten people, there are not a quarter in my community, there are not ten minutes of that.
Yeah. Okay.
The other thing that I think is really important is, as this road comes, and I don't think we're gonna be safe. It's not the road, it's not gonna have a proper rate on it, but yeah. But just like parker waters and, you have your own problems right now, I've had it last week. But basically, yeah. Reason of that is, we're, we've got, we've got, we've got, we've got, we've got, we've got. And everybody works a lot, and that's the issue. So, the problem, the truth of the matter is, they recognize their road damage, their original, where they love to park. I mean, we're gonna have to have other infrastructure, which is important, kind of broken, whatever, kind of, series of, 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 of. Whether you're ready or not, um, there, uh, you might be, you know, smarted. We're gonna have to look at other things that we haven't had before. And then you have to sort of raise and justify and provide proper resources to help them develop. And certainly, it's a difficult one. And probably why you've got to manage that, that you could get a free water now.
Well.
When you, when you, it's. When you, uh, it's, uh, we've tried to add the, since it's on the, uh, uh, property just as you might have. It's not even, you know, that video, we don't have radio. It's, you know, people, you know, aren't necessarily allowing you that, that law. But those are the goals we're in the office to, to be recognized and respond to the public to the, to the degree of the process of, uh, so. We, what can you do to ask them to, um, in some way, where they're willing, they're willing to be in the path of, of, uh, and they're willing to, without having a thought, you know, sort of, uh, can, can start, we need to, uh, to imagine the surface of, of, of the well patterns, uh, with, with the wall start. And I think, you know, that's very, very good. You're not gonna get, you're not gonna get a really much of a government, it's not that sort of what we need to have. You need to make this priority. You're providing data. You're not making the decision. You're providing the data. I get that. They're making the decision. This is the decision. And B, you know, you can talk about the battle box and all your, and all, but nobody wants to end up five years, uh, saying, uh, we showed it. Absolutely.
And with that, if I could jump in a little bit. No, and I do appreciate the discussion. Part of the sharing of information is holding meetings like this and what, what, um, Bob is doing within his HOA and some surrounding.
One more suggestion?
Certainly.
Well, in our meeting I had the other day, we, we, what do you wanna call it? Yes. I want to. Well, that would be the simplest thing that you could possibly do. And that's something that CDS can do, and you can do, and if.
And, now, and I don't disagree, Bob, but the, and I'm not gonna argue against your point, that that's the reality of what happened with the deep wells for the, the Gold Creek, the new Gold Creek subdivision within Elizabeth. When it's a county subdivision, something like Independence, yes, their water system had to be in before they could put homes in. Um, in the case of Elizabeth, where homes were being added to an existing water system and the wells didn't keep up, that's something we definitely need to discuss. And I'm not gonna put the trustees from Elizabeth on the, on the spot, but had it been a blank slate new subdivision, that wouldn't have happened. So please be careful you don't project, I mean, that's, this is, that's a specific issue that does need to be dealt with. Uh, when CDS is looking at a new subdivision, and we haven't had many, if any, new entitlements for any large subdivisions, since I've been in office, I mean, Independence was two thousand and eight, the Gold Creek subdivision in Elizabeth was mid-two thousands. Spring Valley's been building out from, was originally approved in, in two thousand twenty. Most of what we've been doing is, is Platts to support a plan that was quite a while ago. So, um, you know, the issues that may have occurred because of, I won't even say lack of planning in the past, 'cause like I said, Independence is on deep wells, should not be affecting, uh, the folks around them. Some of the work that has been done, again, people have been talking about it for thirty years, I hope, um, for both, um, Bob Ware and Bob Rowland. Um, you know, I applaud our previous commissioners for getting the initial well study online so we could actually gather data. Um, and then, just prior to taking office, the, um, grant for the rural water study that Forsgren completed on behalf of the county, which is, um, we have had discussions that now that we've got seven years of data, we're looking, we're well beyond when the initial water study was completed by Forsgren. It's time to take the data we have, go back and look at the assumptions that were made for both population growth and water usage and where the water tables are at to see if, is that something that, um, would change what, um, recommendations are coming out of those reports? And based on the, um, Forsgren study, some of the changes that have been made was a, a better definition, better re, refined definition of what three hundred years of water use is. Uh, the previous regulations or what was in place when we came into office was essentially if you're on an aquifer, you better have a usage rate of no more than three hundred, uh, or at a three hundred year rate. If you had a certain percentage of renewable water coming in, you could use the aqua, you could consume aquifer water at a greater, at a, at a greater rate, which I don't think was the intent, but it was the way the language worked out. So that has been changed. So regardless of, of what your sum total of water usage is, whether it comes from right now, recycling like we see within Independence, or in the future, renewable water coming from outside the county, that the consumption rate, when you're tapping into an aquifer, won't exceed a three hundred year rate. Um, yeah, please, quickly. Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, oh, gotcha. For those that are on the live stream, they're not catching everything that's in there. Not yet.
You know, back when, back some years ago, I recall, I had a, there was a poster in the office over here, and the information that came from the USGS, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, I, dates may be wrong, and I'm getting older and less accurate in my reporting, but they said that of all the water that was taken out of the Denver Basin in the year, I think it was two thousand twelve, out of all the water that was drawn from the Denver Basin, four percent was taken out in Elbert County. So I've told people, you know, we can put toilet, we can put bricks in our toilets, like we used to do, I think during the Jimmy Carter era and all the other times that we talked about. But here in Elbert County, we're kind of at the mercy of people like Douglas County and Arapahoe County and El Paso, who all have straws in this Denver Basin. That's not gonna change. Um, I, I think what we need to do as we go forward, the past is the past, yesterday is yesterday. What we need to do, and as you just said, you know, we need to, to have a, we need to all work together, understanding that the reality of Elbert County growing and the population increasing and people needing homes and wanting to enjoy the same beautiful, wonderful lifestyle that we all enjoy is gonna continue. So what do we do going forward together in a positive way to, to ma, to make that happen and ensure that when my grandchildren take over my place, um, that they can enjoy the same, expect the same, you know, benefits that I've enjoyed? And I think that's where we need to go and start looking hard at the experts that are supplying the data, but how do we apply that data and do it smartly? Do we need to build, um, do, you know, do we need to, to be part of a, a water, I thought I had that turned off, excuse me. Um, do we need to build a, I'm sorry, that button, I guess my finger.
Warning, warning, bullshitter alert.
I'm glad we had a mic available for that, Robert.
I'm sorry. It hasn't gone off for a long time. Um, but we need to do what all areas and counties that are gonna grow. Someday it'll be the next county over, looking at the same issues and, and needing to do the same things. We ha, you have to have infrastructure to support populations, growth and commercial development and all the things that are coming, as well they should. So let's get on the stick now, sit down and talk and, and make decisions and decide what resources we have and what resources we need. You know, um, I'll vote for the bond, I don't know if the rest of the people in the county will, to do whatever we need to do, but we've gotta prepare and make sure that our, that our current population, our current residences, our homes and our real estate values are as safe as they can be and, and, and make way for what's coming as well. It's gonna take more than just pulling out of an aquifer that's defined as mine to extinction. And, um, in, in times of drought and climate change, we gotta take all those things into, there are, those are the realities of the world we live in. Let's work together now. Let's get together, sit down, no pointing fingers, no looking back, let's just look ahead and go and, and get it done.
I'm gonna ask you a technical question, and this is based on phone calls that I've been getting, because the, the two largest subdivisions we have in the county, not, not in Elizabeth, uh, we've dictated that the developer can only take the water below the Dawson's. They can take it from the Denver and the Arapahoe, and I guess the Laramie-Fox Hills if they go that deep. But people have referred to this map you have on page three, uh, where you, you have it in there, like, uh, each one of these aquifers is contiguous, touching each other. So when I've talked to people that have called me from the surrounding, particularly of Independence, they say, well, all these aquifers are contiguous or touching each other, therefore because they're drilling the well into the Arapahoe, that means they're draining me up in the, uh, the Dawson also. And I, I have a background in geology, so I, I understand the, the segregation and all that kinda stuff, but you being in end up, explain it, because some few times people call me dumber than a sack full of dirt. And I say, yeah, that's what separates the zones.
No, that's, that's a really good question, a really great technical question, that's thinking of the aquifer system as not just these individuals, but as a whole. Um, so typically, when you have these different aquifers, they're, what, what we can call their properties are not gonna be the same. Um, so if you look at the upper Dawson, lower Dawson versus the Laramie-Fox Hills, the way that water, you know, is transported between or even just within those aquifers themselves is not uniform. Um, so these, these are really great because, you know, they show the vertical juxtaposition. Um, but just because you're pooling from the Arapahoe doesn't mean that the recharge from that Arapahoe is coming from the vertical area. Uh, the way that groundwater flows, uh, is it's most, it could be very well flowing horizontally. So instead of going down, if we look at the Arapahoe in this cross section, if you were to pull some of that water, let's just say you pull that water down, or most of that water down, um, it not, it won't necessarily pull it from the Denver formation above, just because the geologic properties aren't, you know, essentially won't necessarily allow that vertical transport as readily as to whereas with these better aquifers, uh, the horizontal flow is a lot more, um, let's just call it easier.
Explain how the impervious rocks between the aquifers work.
Yeah, and so when, so if you say you pull it down and you have this impervious shale in between the Arapahoe versus the Denver Basin, um, that's, when that water is pulled down, that water from above cannot acc, it can't necessarily access it because that shale is preventing it. So you just like, just envision that shale as like a cement block, like it's just closed off. There technically could be some vertical transportation, it's not gonna be noticeable, it's not gonna be very much. Um, so I wouldn't be as concerned with that, that vertical transport, um, as much as, you know, the horizontal transport, um, because like he mentioned, there are those impervious units and that geologically they just differ. They're not gonna necessarily allow for that vertical transport as easily. And with these systems, it's about efficiency. It's about how, how will the water flow and how does it flow and how can it get to that spot easiest to replenish that area necessarily?
Uh, Corey, in, um, relating to that horizontal flow, you had some maps, I think it's on eight or nine, um, that showed the.
Next one?
There we go.
Yes.
The upper, upper right-hand corner where it cuts off at the borders of the county and water doesn't really respect.
Yeah.
Our, our borders, as Robert was saying, we only draw about four and a half, four, four and a half percent. And we're, we're surrounded by three counties that make up a third of the population of the state on the northeast or west and, and south. Do, do you have data or mapping that shows what, okay, and again, the upper right, you got that darker red, reddish-orange area, is that the, so we could see whether that, is that a circle that's completed within, you know, five miles of the border of Douglas County, or is that the end of a lozenge that stretches, you know, out to Littleton?
I mean.
Without being able to see that map.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't know whether we're in a concentrated area of drive, drawdown or.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I mean, it's essentially the center of the entire basin area there, but.
Yeah, so that's, are you just asking?
So do we have read, I guess, the short answer, do we have the regional look?
Uh, there is, there was a regional groundwater flow model created. Um, this would be more fine tuned to the area and this, you know, is specifically tailored towards Elbert County, but there are reports also for the adjacent Douglas County. Um, I believe that report was early two thousand twenty, most likely. Um, and so anytime you see these maps with these, you know, um, abnormal cutoffs, that's because we are, you know, keeping it to the Elbert County area, or they were previously. But, you know, for this upcoming report, that brings up the legitimate question, we could, you know, look and see if that data is available and create a, maybe a wider ranging, uh, map right there, you know, that doesn't just end at that county border.
Because to the comments of essentially, we're all in this together.
Exactly.
Where we, you know, that seems to center around Elizabeth, and I can't, from here tell whether that's just one aquifer, the whole system.
Yeah, that's just one aquifer.
Okay, because we have certainly denser and more folks farther north of where the drawdown is, but they're mostly on, on Denver and Arapahoe water and deeper basins.
Yeah.
So having that whole picture is important, and then I would urge you to pursue your landing page, but within the county, we should, I think, within our CDS page have access to all the reports that, that we have access to.
Yeah.
They have been there.
I'm a lot of this regiment, you have.
No, it, it does not, and with that.
Um, and in regards to that, if, you know, we have conversations later on discussing that landing page, if there is other data available that maybe we could just have a quick link to, we can easily put that on our webpage and say, this is what the city of Elizabeth is doing, refer to this link, and we could have like a little section. That way it is, uh, 'cause I agree, accessibility is really difficult and, you know, sometimes the, you brought up a really good point, sometimes the data's just sitting there in separate silos. So, you know, really bringing that together is a really, I don't, it's just something that I care about a lot because, I mean, the data's there, but what does it matter if nobody's looking at it? Um, so that's why, you know, floating this landing page is something we've been talking about. It wasn't in our initial proposal, so, you know, that's, our talks will have to be about that, may, we might have to update our proposal, but I don't see why we couldn't talk about doing that sooner rather than later, um, just so that y'all can have something that's.
That would be for citizens.
Yeah, yeah.
It's been become a political issue, but I, my question is, who in the county?
Who is it in your, in the county, uh, structure that would be or is responsible for, um, this data that we're getting? It's, uh, we, we're just not putting it in a drawer, I mean, we're.
No, no, no.
We're, we're spending a lot of money, you know, getting the data and it's, it's incredibly important. So what, who do we have that is the steward of this information? And what is they doing to get the information to you and the planning commission and everybody else where it's relevant?
Yeah, the overall coordination with USGS on this has been through the county manager and then shared with CDS, shared with economic development, but making the effort to make sure it's also readily available to the public.
Okay.
Do, um, I think Kermit had a question or a comment.
Because they need to understand a lot more than the summary that he's talking about.
Understood.
Don't drop it.
I'll try not to. Yeah, I've been, I live up in Sun Country, and I'm a retired geologist, I worked in hydrology, um, oil, gas, most minerals, geothermal, and I've been monitoring our well ever since we moved there with a sonic sounder. Um, the well was drilled in ninety-one, the water level was about two hundred and sixty-seven feet. Um, we bought in the summer of two thousand and ten, the water level was two eighty-four. Had a pump test done, I had, I paid for it, I wasn't happy with it, and since then I've been monitoring the well and, um, it drops about a foot a year. Over thirty-one years, it's been about a foot. It's in the Dawson, it's in, excuse me, the, it's in the Denver. Um, this last year we had our pump lowered just because we had the, had the pump replaced. So we had that lowered, um, twenty feet. What I have found is, and I, we actually offered a water aquifer to, of course, last year in Sun Country, and there was so much, at the firehouse, there's so much concern that only six people showed up. And most of them had no idea, uh, anything about their wells other than, do I have a well report? Do I have my water rights?
More would have dropped.
Yeah. Pardon?
More, more will show up if it gets fixed.
Yeah.
We don't wanna wait.
No, that, yeah, so there's actually cisterns being installed up there. There's wells that are being re-drilled and, or I should say they're new drills, they aren't re-drilled, and they're going down another couple hundred feet, you know, just to get the water. And un, understanding the vinticularity of those sands, they're not all connected, they're not a black, uh, you know, sheets, and there are people that are concerned about, well, I've got sulfur smell on my well, what's that from? Well, there's a few lignites floating around in there too, so. And I agree what the gentlemen are saying in terms of, we need a concerted effort, one, just educating people that move out here. A, a few months ago, there was somebody's well, and it showed up on, next door, was, I didn't even know I had a well in a septic tank. So these are the type, apathy is pervasive, pervasive until you're personally affected. And getting people educated and then understood is.
Getting that same sulfur smell all over the world too.
Yeah, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we, I, I think you brought that, we talked about that, like, a couple months ago. Um, yeah, and so, you know, from just the conversations, I feel like as though we're having this landing page that we could potentially put out and, um, after discussions, uh, between us, maybe that's something that would be really helpful for the citizens, and I'm very on board with that, 'cause it just makes it so much more accessible. And I'm not entirely sure how the citizens share information, but, you know, having a webpage available, it's easy to share on Facebook or, you know, email or anything. Um, sometimes people are a little more apprehensive to that, so, you know, that was something I did wanna discuss today. If this hypothetical landing page or webpage was created, if it would be largely useful to the citizens of Elbert County? Um, and it sounds like it would be, so that's, that's great information for us to have.
Start slow, but I think.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And there's, there's multiple ways that we can get these webpages out, I mean, there are QR codes, um, that we could potentially implement, like, just attaching a quick QR code to a well that we're, is on our network and somebody could just scan it, be taken straight to that webpage, um, which could have all of our information just displayed right there. Um, these are all just ideas and we'd have to hash this out, but this is really helpful.
Having the.
This is gonna permit, you know, if you never told.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, having the facts available for public discussion is always better than, like I said, every time you see on social media that, I woke up this morning and I have no water, you know, you, you see a million comments about, about what's happened to the aquifers versus why did my well burn out? Or, you know, or I lost a pressure vessel or, um, sir.
Just a couple of quick questions.
Yeah.
Corey.
Yes.
Uh, you're monitoring wells, the upper Dawson and maybe even some of the lower Dawson. Are they domestic wells?
Uh, largely, yes.
Okay, how do you know that they're at static and they're not in some stage of recovery?
That's a, that's a really great question. Um, so we actually have this quality analysis and assurance that we go through with each one. So first, we contact the landowners and typically give them an hour, uh, time window, and then when we go to the well following USGS groundwater protocol, we take, uh, at least two measurements to make sure that that water level isn't shifting within the, like, most miniscule amount.
Measurements, how close together?
Um, they're at least three minutes apart.
Oh, boy, that.
Yeah.
Recover a lot in three minutes, huh?
Yeah, so what we have, we, we do see this, uh, a lot of times where, you know, landowners might forget, and within that three minutes, I've seen it change two feet. Um, so like, for, for me, that's a really, that's really almost assuring because that shows to me, you know, when we go out and we get what we call static measurements, those are truly static and we aren't as worried about that component of, you know, fluctuation.
Does it, does it, does we have a vulnerability problem out there, you know, where people water, water? Yeah. These answers are question, okay.
The other, the other thing I wanna point out.
Mm-hmm.
I run an augmentation well.
Mm-hmm.
State of Colorado's mandated for our subdivision. We in, we don't inject, we.
Yeah. Sir, could you hold the mic a little closer?
We, we hold a.
Thanks.
We have a recharge pit that we pump four and a half acre feet of water in a year, and supposedly this comes from, well, I know it comes from the lower Dawson.
Mm-hmm.
It goes into the recharge pit and it, it, uh, trickles down into the upper Dawson.
Mm-hmm.
And if I remember right, I'm up gradient of one of your monitoring wells, and I'm just wondering if four and a half acre feet that's eventually gonna get down to the upper Dawson would affect some of your readings from that particular monitoring station?
I, I would say, um, within those, like, instant, those discrete measurements, uh, I doubt it. Could it affect that long-term trend? It's possible, um, and that's why these studies are great. Um, so like, within this map, you can see kind of those anomalies where we have positive trends, um, maybe, you know, within your area, uh, that positive trend could be occurring. Um, within that instant, are, are you referring just to that, like, discrete instant measurement or just in general? Like, will it, will the injection or the recharge affect your well then?
Uh, say that again, I didn't.
Sorry, like, were you referring to just like, when we're taking our measurement at that moment, will that recharge affect that measurement? Are you just asking if that recharge will affect the overall, like, the, the trend, the amount of water in that area?
Well, I'm assuming the, the gradient is such that it's east of north by twenty or thirty degrees, which is, which puts the recharge pit up gradient from one of your monitoring wells.
Mm-hmm.
So eventually that water will get down to the upper Dawson table and migrate.
Yes.
And go to that well that you tag four times a year?
Mm-hmm, uh, yes, six, yeah, but yeah.
Four times a year.
Yeah, that's, that's very possible. Um, and, you know, uh, that's, like I was saying, that's what these studies are. like I was saying, that's what these studies are for and that's something that we consider whenever we look at these trends like.
Do you interface with the state water engineer? Because if there's going to be a shortage of water, why are they still issuing permits to drill?
Um, not, not to my knowledge, no, we don't. Um, with these studies, we put, we're, we're mostly data collectors and inter, and analysis. And then that's up to tho- those entities to, you know, use that information.
You assume they look at your data?
Yes.
Well, one way to limit the growth would be if the state of Colorado stopped issuing well permits.
I have a question on that map to the left. You know, it shows the air, um, triangles up or down? But what time period is that for?
Uh, that's for twenty fifteen through twenty eighteen.
So that, that's for three, three years then, not like one.
Correct.
It would help, I, when I was looking at, I couldn't tell the time period that that was for. It would help if you had some of that stuff on that map.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Sorry about that. Um, yes, so these are, any of these maps that you see, these are from our previous report that was released and these are all trend analyses for twenty fifteen to twenty eighteen. Um, and I really wanted these just as illustrations of what we plan on doing again with our upcoming report.
And I know just since the town of Elizabeth is here, I did want to just recognize if folks haven't, that my understanding that they have adopted for new, new development requirement for a proven three hundred years as well, so. That was not the case, I believe, with the, the newest subdivision that was just built out, but anything future? And I may be wrong on whether gold cre- okay, so, um, having them onboard with the consistent use is, is big. I mean, they're, they are our biggest municipality and statewide, the one percent usage per year is the standard. So the county had adopted three hundred years along with El Paso and there's very few, um, places throughout the state where three hundred years is then the local standard. So I, I do applaud them and thank them for, for joining that because you, you can see now obviously what the effect of having a different draw or a faster draw rate for the town versus the, um, county has, has turned or what the result of that has been. And I guess ag- again, not to put you on the spot, but is there a, a timeline for those deep wells to come on, online? Or, and if you don't know, you don't know. I mean, that's just.
I, I don't have a.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, no, that's much appreciated and hopefully we'll see some, some impact on those. Okay, and the, the answer that was given was sometime this year, which hopefully will have an impact on at least the upper Dawson wells in the area as they do begin to recharge. Sir, your comment about the recharge pit, um, glad to hear and hopefully over the long term we'll, we will see impact and that's the point of augmentation. So to, to help add water back into some of the aquifers that are there being pulled from, so. But I, I, I know we can talk water forever here. But I think this was useful and I think having everybody together and hearing from folks is, is very useful. Um, we will work on making sure the, the info that we've received from USGS is, is more available or readily available on the website. Some of this, I mean, I, I know it's, it's painful to have to, to wait for several years to get analysis, but we're also looking at trying to figure out what long-term trends are. I mean, the rural water study in part was completed because of forums and discussions where it's right to be concerned about our water supply. It's, we want to make sure we, it was, you know, should we be worried that tomorrow you turn on the tap and there's nothing there? Or should we, in which case we're decades behind in water planning? Or are we looking at a fairly, um, stable water supply for decades? So we can actually thoughtfully look at, at growth and how do we supply over the long term? And I think the outcome was we have time to do this thoughtfully. You know, to the, to comments on infrastructure, I'm glad, Bob, that you're willing to pay for a bond. I don't know what the tap fee to a ten acre lot out, outside of Elizabeth would be or out to a, a ranch in, 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 in eastern Elbert County. So part of that, it, it does drive the discussions of growth. Cause if you're going to bring water in, if we were looking at joining, um, with a regional partner, you gotta deliver that water to somebody that can use it. I mean, we're looking at a, a population, you know, our county is growing, but our population is small. I mean, when you're looking at twenty-seven thousand residents, ten thousand homes, spread across eighteen hundred square miles, that is not a, that's not an economic model for distributing water that, that makes sense for outside water. What we have chosen to focus on, what we are focusing on is how do we preserve the upper and lower Dawson's? Uh, we got something to the effect of, I think about seventy-five hundred wells, plus or minus in the county. The vast majority of those are in the Dawson and they're individual wells, so. There aren't a lot of folks that are big fans of more clustered homes, but those do lend themselves to being able to provide water efficiently from the deep aquifers that fewer people are in. So there, there's trade-offs and balances on, on how you move forward. You know, shutting the gates isn't going to happen. Generally in forums like this, uh, it's risky to ask, but how many people here were born in Elbert County? How many people have been here fifty years or more? Yes, it will be, yeah, so.
Where, where on the, on the website will it be?
It'll be on the intranets. Yeah, I might, I, I think it would probably be most appropriate to be under the community development. Yeah, but, um, as we have these discussions, I think we all have to realize we all represent growth in the county at some point in time, whether it's been a few decades or, or less. You know, we're all part of the problem we're trying to solve, so. Yeah, uh, ab- absolutely.
I've lived here thirty years. Chris has asked. When Chris has asked that question before, when we had a group like this, the preponderance of the people have lived here less than five years. And certainly, uh, less than ten will get almost everybody. So, but, and one of the things I think you're alluding to is there's been, there, uh, Elbert County is like a rock in a steel pond. The ripples are now coming out to us. And, uh, that's going to take some management and for what Chris and, uh, the town trustee just said is we're all recognizing that, uh, the upper Dawson's, that upper and lower Dawson are where the preponderance of the people are. So when we've approved developments, that includes Spring Valley Ranch, that includes Independence, which are the two rapidly growing subdivisions in the county. We've made sure that all of the water has to come from the deeper aquifers, so they're not competing with the, the surrounding residents. Now, what Bob Wer just talked about, that's a history prob- history problem. And I looked it up and one of the wells that's competes with hi- his wells is completed into two aquifers. Well, uh, for those of us that have studied geology, know which aquifer has given up the water? The one with the best porosity, permeability and, uh, that. So that would probably suggest that the most shallow of the two zones that it's completed in is contributing the preponderance of the water. So that, 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 that's affected. And, uh, one of the things is, has a little to do with my background. When we approved the Independence Water System, we made doggone sure that they had to go down to the deeper zones. And this is a true story. The, the developer said, well, I don't know if I want to go to those deeper ones. And one of the three of us said, well, I wonder how I'm going to vote. He says, okay, we'll go to the deeper zones. So the whole point is, is that, uh, it does take, uh, some recognition of how water flows. And one, and it goes back to that thing on page three again. If you look at it, uh, Elizabeth has all five of the aquifers and it's also at the bottom of the basin. So gravity is its friend. It's going to drain the upper zones because water runs downhill, they tell me. So the whole point is, is that we need to look at this stuff from a engineering, a geological and a practicable point of view. And this is one of the things these studies are trying to, uh, not trying, they're going to help us make good decisions.
Uh, just one last thought and I know you had a comment to, um, just that remember, we've been around for about a hundred and fifty years as a county. First folks that came here pretty much subsist- Running Creek was probably running, not, um, but people subsisted on groundwater and hand dug ro- hand dug wells. Um, technology has certainly improved, um, a lot of the wells. Our first subdivision, um, in the county was Ponderosa Park. And a lot of those wells were, um, it was early to mid-sixties that that was built out. It was relatively cheap to build and wells were punched down until they hit water and not much further. And there have been times when there, wells in that area have gone dry because they were shallow. Um, my home was built in about two thousand, water levels around two fifty. It was drilled almost eight hundred feet. I mean, there's responses, um, I mean, responses to issues in that respect where a lot of the newer wells are drilled much deeper than, well, well deeper than, than the current water table with the expectation that it would drop over time. But we also have to be looking at what technology is out there and what's, not, not to bet on, just we'll keep using it and somehow it'll all magically work out. That is, that is not the direction we're taking. But I think the, um, conservation efforts, um, requiring, uh, anything larger, new or central water systems to look at recycling. Right now, the, what recycling reuse is, is, is reasonable and technologically and economically makes sense when you start talking around three hundred homes. Uh, when Spring Valley started, they were looking at six hundred or more before you had enough water for them. Um, so just in the ten to fifteen year period of technology, um, we, we've seen an advance there. And I think we will, moving forward as well, where you get, where you have, you know, the shared water sources and shared, shared discharge, where you can actually start looking at reuse sooner and, and sooner with smaller communities is also going to be something that, um, I think we're going to see more of i- in the years to come. But there's a lot we need to be looking at. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and we've had those discussions that our, our four percent gives us another thirty minutes after the Denver metro is dry. Enough there. Sir, did you have some comments?
Yeah, I, I, so my name is Rob Flynn. I'm also with the USGS. And I just wanted to, uh, follow up on Cory's comment on QR codes. I'm not sure if everybody knows what a QR code is, maybe you all do, but, um, maybe Cory could explain that. But, um, we could, and I think this is a great idea, we could create that landing page. The data that we, that Cory and Kelly, um, obtained in the field is checked and it is uploaded to our NWS system, our national water information system. And we could port that discrete data to that landing page and that would be publicly available. The NWS page is a little cumbersome for the public to use, so I think the landing page would be a great idea. And then I just wanted to add, short of refining that regional groundwater flow model, which could be very expensive. I think, I think Cory mentioned this earlier. Perhaps you might want to consider some age dating to, to get an idea of the age of the water that's being pumped in the individual units, geologic units. So, thank you.
Can you hear me now? Isn't that what they said in that movie? Can you hear me now? Uh, I want to commend the USGS for, they're, they're professional. They come out, they get the job done. They explain if the, if the owner's there, they explain what they're doing, they show us what they're doing. And, excuse me, and, um, uh, yeah, I ca- I can't commend them enough. You guys are doing a good job and I really appreciate it.
I have a quick question. If the upper Dawson is an unconfined aquifer, the state refers to it as a not non-tributary, which is confusing, but anyway, does that mean the surface water is recharging the upper Dawson?
Uh, yes.
Running Creek is, is recharging the upper Dawson?
Yes, in some areas it may be recharging, uh, an alluvial aquifer, you know, and a, a different one. Um, but yes, for the most part is most likely, uh, like supplying that recharge to the upper Dawson. Um, which I would refer back to another, if you go to slide seven, I think, with that map, one of the triangles you can see is actually positive. And our kind of like running hypothesis is that if, since it's in the upper Dawson, it does get more recharged than those deeper aquifers and maybe that's why there was a positive trend. So we actually have just, uh, implemented a new well in the upper Dawson right near it to confirm whether or not that's what's going on.
Cause I think the one spot that you says shows positive is the one that I'm referring to that is downstream of my augmentation well recharge pit.
Are you right by that county border up there?
I can't see that very well.
Yeah, you might not.
UAW sixteen?
You, uh.
UDAW, upper Dawson sixteen?
Yep, okay, yes.
Is that the one that shows positive? I can't see.
Uh, I think you're looking at eleven. Sixteen was the one, upper Dawson map you showed.
Udall sixteen is, has a slight downward trend. It's very, it's much more, um, it's a much slighter downward slope than other wells in the area. Um, but it is, it is technically still a downward trend from the twenty fif- from the twenty fifteen to twenty eighteen analysis. Um, but with this new analysis, we might see that it could be positive. Um, it's just we don't, when we perform that statistical, statistical analysis, we'll know.
So the new report will reflect differences than what happened five years ago?
Yeah.
What's happened?
Yeah, that's, that's the great thing about these ongoing reports is we can refer back to these in the most recent report and say, oh, maybe there is a point two foot downward trend from twenty fifteen to twenty eighteen. What does that trend look like now?
Point two feet?
Yeah, it could be.
That's not much to be too concerned about.
Yeah, no, that was just an example, sorry. That was just an example.
The, the one graph that shows the downward, downward trend? Some of that can be attributed to drawdown, I suppose. But can, uh, the drought contribute to that also?
Oh, a- absolutely, yeah. Seasonal weather can absolutely, uh, attribute to that, um, depending on which better aquifer it is in, yes.
So it's not all consumption, domestic consumption?
Not necessarily. Um, it would be hard to pinpoint exactly how much is consumption versus, you know, seasonal, uh, just from weather. But, you know, that's another thing that where age dating could come into play if we decide, if, you know, the board of commissioners decides to continue on. That would be something I would look at in my next proposal, which would be, um, age dating, water quality analysis. Yeah, um, you know, that's, it's going to be variable spatially. You know, certain areas we see less of a downward trend versus others, we see a much larger downward trend every year.
And, and we'll do our best to get as much data out there as possible. But, I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, if, if you're looking at an individual, the measurements on an individual well versus what's happening in the general area or regionally could be very different. As I said, I mean, our well, if you. As I said, I mean, our well, if you, if you pull up your well log, or get, go to the state engineer's site to pull the information from your well, and where your water level was at, where it was drilled, I mean, if, if, if it was drilled several hundred feet below where, where your well's at, and your water's dropping less than a foot a year, eventually, you're gonna have to drop your well pump, but you may have a well that will support for your lifetime. I mean, the, the casing's likely to collapse and have to be re-drilled long before you run out of water on, in something like that. If you're in an older subdivision like Ponderosa Park, where there might have been thirty feet below where, where the well was originally set, the aquifer may be much, much deeper than that, but the well, the well itself wasn't drilled to support that, so. A lot of that just is gonna be based on what was, what was done originally, I mean, when the home was built, or the well was drilled.
Caution, though, like, in Ponderosa Park, you have an initial measurement or static level of one-seventy? Okay, that's what they put all, when they originally dug the well?
Gotcha, yeah.
Everybody put one-seventy, and I got to have to drill it.
No, yeah, and I get that. Right, right, I mean, I mean, you would definitely have to monitor your own well over time, but, okay, well, with, with that, I do appreciate everybody that showed up very much. Thank you to Corey, to other folks from USGS. We will certainly be talking water for a long time to come, but thank you much.